[S01]The first step is to identify the target area. You need to identify the target area by looking for patterns, lines, and other visible elements. Once you have these patterns, you can start drawing the grid. You can draw a triangle, a rectangle, or even a rectangle, which is a triangle. The triangle is usually represented by an equilateral quadrant. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is called the diagonal line of the grid. The diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid. If you want to draw a triangle, you need to draw a diagonal line. This diagonal line is used to identify the corners of the grid.
If I can get our trustees to come up to the dais, please. You have your readout?
Madam Clerk?
Madam President, you have quorum.
Thank you for that, and we will ask trustee Withrow to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Thank you. We will now bring this meeting to order, and can we please have a report out from closed session?
Madam President, there is no readout from tonight's closed session.
Thank you for that. We will move to, excuse me for one second. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? We're on 2.5.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Uen?
Yes.
Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And one point of clarification, Madam Clerk, did we have some items to report on that were moving into action item?
Yes. Let's see, agenda item... Agenda item 4.1 was moved to action, and agenda item 8.1 was removed from the agenda.
Thank you for that. 2.6 approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion? It's been moved in second. Can we do a roll call, please?
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez-Uen? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Point of clarification, Madam Clerk, was 4.1 moved into action?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
We will now move into 2.7, Associated Student Government Reports.
Good evening, trustees. First, I'm starting off by thanking trustee Reese, trustee Weinstein, and Withrow for coming today and doing a walk through the student center. Really appreciate it, and I hope you guys got a wholesome view of the campus, the student center, and the library. And those who missed it, it's always, it's an open invitation, so you're welcome to come. We're working on completion of pictures, so we can email them out to you and to the public, whoever's interested in seeing what the student center and library looks like. So this month is home to two great celebrations at Laney, one being Black History Month, which is a celebration of African-American culture, history, and contribution to America. BSU is heading this event with a whole month of spectacular events, including Black Jeopardy, scavenger hunt, which lasts a whole month with rewards of free pedicures, movie tickets, and other rewards. The library is also hosting a full month of movies, including Black Panther. And the second event, the second celebration, is Lunar New Year's, which was Monday, and A-PAS held a great event with food, music, and lion dancers from our local Chinatown community. KBLX was there. All in all, it was a great week and a great month to come. Thank you.
No one heard that. Hi, everyone. My name is Yamicz Johnson, the Associated Students of Merritt College president. My report's going to be short again, because it's been only two weeks and there's not too much to report. ASMC has decided to go to a national student conference in New Orleans, where we're going to be meeting not only just some California community college students, we'll also be meeting New Orleans, Cali, or New Orleans community college students in Florida, and Maine, and a few other places that will be attending. Thanks to trustee Handy, who put in a call to Delgado Community College, we're actually going to be going up to their City Park campus location to hand out cookies, and candy grams, and flowers, and hearts, and things like that, to their constituents on their campus on February 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to like 3:00 p.m. To, and from what they told us, it's a way to show their students that they love them and they care for them, and that they have a student body to represent them, no matter where it is they go. And after we finish that, helping them out, they're going to give us a tour of that one location they have. They're kind of like us in a way. They've got four different locations. I find it very cool. And then, our second thing, I did tell you guys, the last time I was here, that we did have a drive that would be starting in February, so we are looking for toys for the children's hospital. Please, if you can, contact Dr. Kitchen or myself to donate, or my college president to donate to us. It's soft toys only. Please donate to us. We want to make them feel happy, make them feel warm, and make sure they have a place in all of our hearts. Thank you. Love you all. Bye.
Hi. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Sabrina, and I will be giving an update on ASCOA. So last week, we appointed two new senators, and we'll be interviewing more students this Thursday. This week, we are hosting a workshop on how to start a club. And next week, we are having a club rush on Tuesday, February 12th, and Wednesday, February 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the quad. And also, next week, we are hosting our Valentine's Day party, Thursday, February 14th, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. in the quad. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, every, I mean, good evening, everyone. My name is Ayesha Jordan, and I'm just standing speaking as a student, not as student trustee. I want to thank the Peralta District, because Peralta District is a forerunner in our state. Regardless to what some people may think or say, we are very progressive. And so, I'm standing here as a Restoring Our Communities student from Laney College, saying thank you, because the district just hired two people permanently from Restoring Our Communities who have been very influential in my life. And so, I just wanted to come and tell you thank you, because there is this, I put it up there for you, there is a article that was written in the East Bay Times about a counselor, Alejandra Layden, who is formerly incarcerated, and at the same time, she has helped me to run for senator at Laney when I first started, her and Vincent Garrett. And as a Justice Impactist student, I really appreciate this, and I know that a lot of people in our community are going to appreciate this also. So I just wanted to tell you thank you personally to everyone, whoever got the ball rolling for this. I can't wait to see more things like this. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Classified Senate.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Terrence Fisher, and I am a Peralta Classified Senator. Following Robert Tracy's resignation from his biology lab coordinator position at Laney College, the Peralta Classified Senate is preparing to reboot itself with two major actions. First, I have been leading a subcommittee charged with a major rewrite of our Senate Constitution and bylaws. This initial work is now complete and ready to be reviewed at our February meeting, with the intention for it to be adopted in March. This important work will help guide us through the process of electing a new executive board of Senate officers in June. Secondly, the PCS stands ready to assist and provide guidance to the District Administrative Center, which is resurrecting its Classified Senate. While there had been a functioning Senate several years ago, the District Classified Senate has been mostly inactive following the untimely passing of their Senate president some six years ago. We are looking forward to restoring the Peralta Classified Senate, whereby we will again have representation from all five district sites, and therefore able to move fully, able to more fully participate in shared governance activities. Onto the campus reports. The first meeting of the spring semester for the College of Alameda and Berkeley City College Classified Senates will be later this week, so there are no reports from them at this time. After the recent reorganization brought about by Robert Tracy's resignation and the promotion of Glenn Pace, the former vice president, the Laney College Classified Senate is moving forward with its shared governance participation, beginning with new appointments to committees. I have a report for Merritt College. Today, the Merritt College Classified Senate held an emergency meeting to discuss the Veterans' Resource Center and the Faculty and Staff Lounge. The VRC team, which consisted of faculty, staff, and students, presented their request to occupy R-23 and relocate the faculty and, and the faculty-staff, Faculty and Staff Lounge to Q-111. During the meeting, the Senate and the VRC team walked over the View Q at 111, and the team and the Senate did not feel that Q-111 were suitable accommodations for the Faculty and Staff Lounge, or for the VRC. A motion was entertained to vote on regarding relocating the Faculty and Staff Lounge. However, during the discussion, we, they were informed that R-20, R-20, R-23 is offline and is identified as the Faculty and Staff Service Lounge, according to the Fusion 2 report. The VRC team and the Merritt College Classified Senators, who serve on the Facilities Committee, were asked to obtain written proof from the Director of Business Services. The Senate approved to table the vote until the next Senate meeting on Tuesday, February 19th. That's the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening. My name is Donald Moore. I'm the District Academic Senate President. A few things. This spring, the State Academic Senate is celebrating its 50th anniversary. And I bring that up, I bring that up because it was initiated by faculty who were here in Peralta, over at Merritt College, I believe. And I can't pronounce the name correctly, so I will try Berskoff, Burkoff, Burs, anyhow. Bershak? Bishak? Bishak?
His name was Norbert Bishak.
Thank you. Norma Bishak. Thank you. And, and so, we're going to be celebrating this in April, April, over here in South San Francisco with the state. But I wanted to bring your attention to, to that, to say that the academic senates have been here in Peralta, obviously, for more than 50 years. And we stand ready today to work with our colleagues here, as we go through this exercise of looking at how to address the issues around our deficit. And attended a really great meeting yesterday with the FICMET people, and realized that they're, what they're going to be doing is very, very narrowly focused in terms of the areas that they're going to be looking at. And I think that the chancellor has mentioned other people who are going to be looking at some other component areas of the budget. But I think that one of the things that I really want to see happen is our collective ability to address these issues with our subcommittees off of our PBC and PGC. And so, in the next coming weeks, we're going to be diving into the finance and looking at the different issues that were raised up with the accreditation. And my hope and my challenge to the administrators, to the faculty, to the classified, to all of the different people is, is to work together and to hear and listen to each other, because it's going to take our collective in order to really come up with a viable five-year, five-year fiscal plan. So I encourage everybody to try to work and collaborate with one another, and, and the Academic Senate stands ready to do so. So look forward to working with the board and with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, do we have any public communication?
We do. I'm going to mention a few people, if you want to come up here. Jennifer Shinoski, Erin Leonard, and Jimmy Song.
Good evening. So I was originally going to speak to you tonight about some of the problems that are plaguing many of our faculty, including getting reimbursed and getting paid on time. We still have the issue of our soccer coaches at Merritt College, who no longer work for the district, who have shelled out more money out of pocket for games for their students than they were actually paid to be coaching for the semester. He's now quit and moved to a different district. We have another full-time faculty, tenure-track faculty, who quit the district for a similar reason. They were supposed to be reimbursed for materials that they purchased for their class, and never were, and so left and moved to another district. We have a full-time faculty who came back on leave and was not paid at the end of January, because even though he informed the college of his intent to return in November, an EPAF was never generated to make sure that he was paid. Anyway, those were the stories I was going to tell you tonight. But instead, I am going to pivot a little bit. And tonight, I went to the Oakland City Council meeting and spoke on behalf of the Oakland United, Oakland Unified School District's teachers. There's a resolution on the city council agenda tonight, asking, or providing support to Oakland Unified teachers to stop school closures, closures in Oakland, to increase public funding around the district, and to pay people, pay the teachers a fair wage and settle the contract. So instead of talking about the many things, many specific issues, what I'd like to do is read the statement that I made to city council tonight, because I think that it... is read the statement that I made to city council tonight, because I think that it also applies within this district. So I introduced myself. You already know who I am, so I won't bother to do that. But the thing that I think is important with the Oakland Unified Teachers' strike, upcoming strike, that they voted to authorize yesterday, is that the struggle of the Oakland teachers are the same struggles that plague Peralta. The teachers here, instructors here in Peralta, know too well the negative impact of underfunding public education in general. And we also feel the revenue that we do get is squandered and mismanaged by what we see as an inflated and incompetent administration. And we struggle every day to serve our students as best we can, despite low pay, a crumbling infrastructure, and sometimes not even the materials that we need in the classroom. So the PFT urged the council to pass tonight the resolution, and I urge all of you to pass a similar resolution in support of the Oakland teachers and in support of Peralta teachers. Thank you.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So first of all, I'd like to say thanks to the board for giving us a chance to make our concerns heard, and thanks to President Gilkerson and Mr. Pinto for responding to our inquiries and concerns. So I'm Erin Leonard. I live in Oakland, and I swim for the Masters Swim Team Memo at Laney Pool. My 12-year-old daughter swims for the Oakland Undercurrents and Oakland Youth Swim Team, also homed at Laney Pool. Since the pool closure in early December, I've been driving in the morning across town to swim with Temeska and taking my daughter back across town to swim at Defremory. This takes time and coordination to do what we love to do. Not only has time and planning been a factor in our lives, but there are associated personal expenses with the pool closure. The closure of the Laney Pool has meant that I've paid dues for December and January, but I only got to swim for one week. My cost for swimming at other pools in January was three times what it normally is for a single month. The personal financial impact has also been significant for our coach, Marcia Benjamin, who has not been paid in at least six weeks. The financial impact has also been felt by Memo, Laney College, and the Oakland Undercurrent Swim Team. Janet Green, one of the administrators for the Oakland Undercurrents, wrote that, quote, "Beginning in May 2018, the Laney Instructional Pool was not available for approximately eight weeks of the 10 weeks that the Oakland Undercurrent Swim School had set up to rent the instructional pool for lessons. The issue was a problem with the chemicals. The impact was devastating to our program. We lost 90% of the revenue we used to support our swim programs, and 75% of our Learn to Swim students couldn't attend the program because we couldn't use the instructional pool. Due to the depth of the water in the competition pool and lack of space because we also have a swim team, we weren't able to just move the lessons to the big pool. Those closures continued in the fall program and will impact the spring and summer 2019 programs. Our no refund policy prevented us from giving refunds, but we'll have to honor swim lessons for those who return to the program at no cost. Into the fall, the issue in the instructional pool continued. We lost 10 days because the pool was shut down and had to extend swim school a week. We couldn't complete the makeup days because the pool was shut down for two days during the makeup week. We also had to move to an Oakland Parks and Recreation Pool in December due to the pools being shut down. Once again, we lost customers because of transportation issues. This is impacting our budget and having to rent another pool and losing customers who can't come out to West Oakland to attend the program. On top of this, the fees for renting Laney Pool are $170 per hour when you factor in the rental costs for both pools and a Laney supervisor. I don't know if you'll get to speak this information, but we would like to convey this to the board," end quote. Beyond finances, the impact on our teams and Laney's reputation is significant. Memo won the 2018 Pacific Masters Short Course Yards and Short Course Meters Championship meets, beating out some of the powerhouse swim teams in the greater Bay Area. Now, our team has been scattered for two months while we should be training for that same championship meet in 2019. Some members have left permanently due to the inconsistency in the Laney Pool availability. Excuse my pun when I say that the effects of the Laney Pool closure have rippled beyond a few people or one team. I urge the board to take whatever actions are necessary to ensure the pool is not closed again and to find a way to compensate those who were displaced during the disruption. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Yes. Hello. My name is Jimmy Song, and I'm also on the Masters Swim Team at Laney. And I also take some classes at Peralta Colleges from time to time. I'd like to bring to your attention the needlessly lengthy closure of the Laney Swimming Pool and how it has pointlessly disrupted hundreds of lives. The pool first closed down on December 10th due to all five of the brand-new heaters breaking down. This never would have happened if someone had been brought in to repair the heaters before they all failed. What was initially a several-day repair project kept dragging on and on. Every week, we heard, maybe we'll be open next week, but the new repair items just kept getting added on. Here we are nearly two months later, and the pool has only just now reopened. Even so, there are still problems. I learned today that the pool chemicals were imbalanced on January 2nd. I'm sorry, I learned on January 2nd. The pH readings taken today were still off. The maintenance staff have had over a month to fix this problem. It's ridiculous that we're still having to deal with this, especially as it's happened numerous times before. To be frank, the way the pool closure has been managed is a textbook example of awful project planning and execution. It's quite fundamental, when it comes to these things, to plan in advance what will be done, figure out how long it will take, set a deadline, and then execute the plan. None of this happened here. The completion date was kept open-ended, and there was clearly no plan in place. Tasks that could have been done in parallel were done one at a time, with huge gaps in between of nothing happening. The resulting uncertainty left hundreds of swimmers and parents hanging, as it's impossible to plan around a disruption that has no end in sight. There appears to be no consequence for irresponsibility or incompetence. Even though the staff have not done a good job of getting the pool reopened in a timely manner, they get away with not even a reprimand while our coach Marcia goes unpaid for the months she should have worked. Unless there's some accountability put in place, you can expect there to be more problems in the future. As swimmers swam elsewhere and news of the pool closure spread, Laney has gained a reputation as a mismanaged and incompetently-run place, and deservedly so. Furthermore, it's fiscally negligent to lose out on over $14,000 of monthly revenue from fees and rentals due to this mismanagement. I urge all of you to take concrete action on this problem to prevent it from happening again. It's the right thing to do for the community you serve, for taxpayers and students, and for the sake of the school's reputation.
Could I ask Todd Wayman to come up and Danny Wan? Yasuko De La Torre?
My name is Todd Wayman. I also am a member of the, a member of the Memo's Masters Swim Team that practiced at Laney College and won the Pacific Masters Championship for the first time last year. This is all a result of Marcia Benjamin, who coaches the team for 12 to 16 hours each week. Sadly, before today, the last practice she coached was on December 7th. Since then, the Laney Pool has been shuttered as a result of broken heaters, chemical imbalances, and delayed or incomplete maintenance. That's over eight weeks for those counting at home. Eight weeks. The situation affects over 100 master swimmers who pay almost $700 bucks a year, the Undercurrents Youth Swim Team, Laney Water Sports and Swimming Classes. Since the pool shutdown, we have been given dates, given seven dates when the pool would open. None have been true. This is infuriating. Other teams in the area are dumbfounded that Laney Pool has been closed for so long. Laney's pool has become a laughingstock. This 57-day shutdown is the result of incompetence or dereliction and reflects a systemic issue. The pool has had numerous shutdowns that have lasted up to four weeks over the past three years. One example, during this shutdown, a new chlorine tank was installed. It just needed to be inspected and signed off on. When the inspector showed up, he discovered that the tank hadn't been filled. So the inspection had to be delayed several days, seemingly without consequence for those responsible for the oversight. I took care of pools as a high school student and a college student. It is not that difficult. Making it even more embarrassing, I have yet to encounter such extensive maintenance problems at any other pool in the Bay Area, even those staffed by volunteers at Alameda Pools, which Trustee Withrow is likely familiar with. As a taxpaying supporter of Peralta and a paying member of Memo, I'm asking the board to investigate, make changes, and set up metrics for monitoring improvement. A few humble suggestions. One, insist on one-day service levels from pool contractors when things break. This shutdown started when all five brand-new pool heaters went down over the weekend in December. They were still under warranty, yet they were not back up and running for a week just as the pool closed for the holidays. Number two, require on-call coverage for pool issues, including weekends, and impose sanctions for failing to manage pool chemicals appropriately. Again, I've done this. It's not that difficult. Number three, set a goal for pool uptime and reward employees based on it. And finally, incentivize all maintenance to be confined to times when the school is on break, with financial rewards and penalties. I would hope the board shares my shame for such a poorly maintained pool, and I ask that you take immediate steps to prevent this kind of continued incompetence or mismanagement moving forward. And finally, I would not invite each of you to come and swim with us and with Marcia. We have swimmers of all ages and speeds, and Marcia is always looking to get more people into the pool. We have practices when the pool is open from 6:00, at 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, noon, and 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Trustees, I think you heard some of the frustration. Oh, frustration that had been building up over the last couple of months, and frankly, it's been an ongoing issue throughout the last year or two, when I swim in pool that has bleached my skin, and then the next day, there was no chlorine whatsoever in the pool, and we swam in it. But ultimately, now we come to a place where it's completely shut down for the last two months. I want to tell you about the Laney Pool a little bit, though. It is, if you're aware or not, the Laney Pool has been the center of a whole community that's built up around a very large diversity of populations, swimmers both advanced and beginner, and dedicated instructor who spent countless efforts to be very inclusive. It is a community of adults ranging from their teens to 80-some-years-old. Who's our oldest member? 80s-year-old who's swimming with us and who is part of the championship team, and children of all skill levels throughout Oakland and Alameda, and children of all backgrounds in the Undercurrents Team that swim at the pool. And our coaches and dedicated instructors are providing one of the very few public institutions that teaches children, students, and adults affordable ways to learn how to swim. If you don't, we don't have Laney, these, a lot of the folks will not be able to learn how to swim. So I'm particularly proud of our team, Memo. Out of 55, 53 regions of competition in the whole United States, we are the champion of one of the regions in the Northern Pacific, which is, if you think about this 50 states, it's equivalent to a state champion for the last two years. And it's, and just so you know, this title of championship is usually won by teams from usually the suburbs, which are better financed, charge a lot of, a whole lot of fees of people who swim, the Olympic Club, of course, it's a very private club, they usually win this team. But we won it in the last two years. The team from Oakland won it, and people were shocked. It's like, oh my God, Laney College? Where's that? So we were very proud of that, and we are very proud of Laney College for supporting this population, and we're very proud of our pool and very proud of our instructors. That's why we come here with some love to say, hey, we, you know, we want some love, and we give love back. We hope that you will give us the attention and get this pool on the track. And I want to thank President Gilkerson for having been very responsive since we raised the issue with her. And also, we just talked to your staff about the, coming to meet with them also to make sure that we, they understand our concerns and maybe understand what is going on. And frankly, if you had told us that the pool is going to be shut down for the next two months, and if you opened such a time, we would have made other plans. I think you heard it was the uncertainty of it all, day-to-day, wonder if it's going to open. By the way, today, the instruction pool, the instruction pool for the swim class, which started two weeks ago, shut down again because some switch didn't operate, and they were notified an hour before the class started. So again, it's not a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we hear your passion.
We still have one.
Yasuko?
Hi. My name is Yasuko De La Torre. I'm also a member of Memo, Master Swim Team, Laney. I'm from Japan. I've been, I've been swimming in Japan until 1997. So I came here, this country, and I started coming to Alameda and Laney College. So I took swimming class also as well as English class. So Laney College gave me a lot of opportunity to learn English, also swimming. And after I graduated Laney College, I came back to become a Master Swim Team, Memo. So we need swimming. I mean, I am a mother, a single mother of three young children. My daughters swim undercurrent. They need swimming. I mean, swimming gives us good health and good mind and good friends. I learned so much from swimming, and my life started from swimming 6:00 AM. And my life's so busy, but swimming gives us balance. If I don't swim, I don't feel well. That's happened to my kids. So we really need pool to swim, and the Laney Undercurrent, the kids' swim team, they bring all kinds of background kids and a really affordable rate, and we are so fortunate to have a team like that. But we don't have pool now, so we have nowhere to go. So we need, parents need swimming and kids need swimming. That makes happy family. So please open maintenance support for us. Thank you for the opportunity for letting us talk today.
Thank you so much for everybody coming and talking to us. Madam President, that ends public comment.
Thank you for that. Yes. And thank you, public, for sharing your comments and concerns about the Laney Swimming Pool. We're sure that staff will be responsive, as they have been. I would like to move us to 2.11, the board study session. Chancellor, would you like to give an intro?
No, just before, if we could recognize the football team, just before the study session.
Okay.
President Gilkerson, will you please introduce?
So thank you so much, Chancellor and board. Wanted to take a moment to have John Beam, the 2018 CCCAA Coach of the Year and our 2018 State Championship Football Team. Coach Beam has two of our students here to present to you all the trophy today. And so, John, feel free to come up and speak.
Let's pick this up. It's been so drag, right? Come on. I want to thank everybody, like I said today, when you win a state championship or Coach of the Year, anything like that, it's not me, it's all of us. And I say that, you know, Donald, you know, you've been in this place before. Fred, all these great instructors we have, all the support we have, the community, this represents what we do, and I never want to stop. Peralta's awesome. I mean, we got problems, I get it, but it's awesome, right? Look at us. Look at these two young men. And I'm going to give a chance, these two brothers, they drive every day from Stockton to come to Laney. Shawnee's trying to get out of here. He's got a chance to go to UCLA, leave after one year, but to do that, he's currently enrolled in 26 units, trying to get it done, right? And still driving two to three hours a day. Ray, his brother, is trying to get out as well, next December, and he's in 21 units. 23. But again, it's because of all the support that we have, it's able to work, right? It's not, it's not me, it's not even them, it's all of us here. So I want to thank you all. Tamile, you're awesome what you did today. If you missed it, I know some of you guys missed it. She's a worker bee. She made it happen. This beautiful banner, the whole program, the Fab Lab, it was awesome. I'll let these guys say something real quick. But right now, both of them have an opportunity to go to UCLA, and then Shawnee just got back from a trip from San Diego State, and he was able to tell them no because he had bigger plans. Now, I don't know if that was smart or not, you know what I'm saying? I'm happy, but you know, that's his choice. So go ahead, guys.
I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to come to Laney and get an education, and also to play football and pursue my dreams with football and get to the next level. And I'd like to say happy birthday to Tamile.
Hello. My name's Nushan. His name's Rajon. He didn't introduce himself.
Stick and pole.
Yeah, he calls it stick and pole. But I just would like to say thank you for allowing us to...
But I just would like to say thank you for allowing us to be able to come to this school and be a part of the, well, now, the winning tradition at Laney. Well, it's been the past couple of years. But yeah, it feels home to me. That's why I take that hefty drive every day. So yeah, I like, I love it here, actually, so. I didn't have a speech, so. I would like to thank, well, wish our president of Laney College, Mr. Tamile, happy birthday.
Thank you. Happy birthday again.
Go Eagles. So, no, no, Chancellor, please. So we're on 2.11. That's just so exciting. I just have to say, they did a wonderful celebration earlier today at the Field House, and it was great.
And yeah, it is indeed a great honor. So to celebrate them, I dress the way that I just, I do. But we certainly are really excited for the accomplishment that they have done. We have with us today Dr. Nikki Harrington, who represents the Collaborative Brain Trust. She's here to share with the board and really engage in some conversation with the board in terms of integrated planning for the district. And this is one piece of the different areas that we are looking at to really look, to work on our five-year financial sustainability, which complements what FICMAT is doing and others. So she will engage the board in some conversation about enrollment management and other things that we want to do. I would like to introduce Dr. Nikki Harrington, who's former chancellor from Yuba Community College District. Please come forward, and she'll recognize other members of her team who are with her. Dr. Harrington?
Thank you very much. You're making me follow the football team? I mean, really? I'm very pleased to be here tonight, and thank you, President Benia, and all the trustees and other members here at the table for having us here tonight. This is a really important discussion. I have the script that's in the board agenda in a larger print, in case that's helpful to you. I'll pass it around. I'd like to introduce my other two teammates that are here with me tonight as well, Dr. Donna Boatwright and Mr. Dan Rosenberg. I'm going to steal your phrase, collective activities. That was great. I like that. I'm going to use that. This is, I think, an important discussion tonight. We've had some great experiences with the district and with the colleges here at Peralta. And all three of us have worked with you in various capacities over the years, so we feel like you're friends already. It's a great district. You have wonderful things going on. You have wonderful students, you have wonderful faculty, classified staff, administrators, district office staff, people who really do have this district and the colleges and the students in their hearts. And we see that, and we've seen that in working with all of you too. So that is very evident. You're at a crossroads right now where you have several things that are going on. The ACCJC Fiscal Health Risk Assessment that was done, and the requirement for an improvement plan, fully fleshed out by the first of May. You have FICMAT, which was a very wise move to have them come and start their process. And I understand they started this week, is that right? And they will do a really nice job of doing an analysis of where the problem areas lie with some recommendations of what to do about that. We've worked with you over the years on a number of projects, including the educational master plans for the four colleges in 2015-16. I was at, Alameda was my assigned college, and my colleagues had each of the colleges that they worked with. So we got to know you in an intimate way and a lot of data about the colleges and the district of how things are working. So what I tried to do is summarize on this agenda item just some of the bullet points of things that are happening concurrently and entertain a discussion from the board as to how you want to proceed from here. What we see that is the most important is probably the first sentence in the paragraph that starts at this time. At this time, "The district and its colleges are in need of a comprehensive, integrated approach to the above issues with a desired result of fiscal health and long-term stability." We know that when there's a fiscal crisis and you're dealing with fiscal issues, all the focus goes on finance. But we also know that enrollment management and looking at marketing to student populations that you perhaps don't serve or are underserved, and looking at the various types of instruction that can be offered, your scheduling process, all of those things together in an integrated fashion is what brings about fiscal health. The other thing that we're very well aware of is that the student-based funding formula, the new funding formula, is requiring funding and student success to be working together with FTES. So we've always been very focused on FTES in the community colleges, and we know that the three have to go together. The new funding formula recognizes that and looks at all of those components in unison. So what we would like to entertain then is a discussion from the board of how you see moving forward. And we're here to answer questions and to try to ask some questions that might be provocative for the board to think about as you're looking at, how do we move from here forward? So maybe that's a, just as an introduction.
Thank you for that, yes. And the way I actually envisioned this is that it would be a full discussion, not just with the trustees, but also with our presidents, our vice chancellors, and really have an open dialogue. Yesterday, we did have the FICMAT orientation, and we had an opportunity to have a little bit of Q and A. And that was great because there were some questions that were brought up for clarifying questions about not just what FICMAT would actually do, but what it would produce in the end. And we heard this reference called a blueprint, that this blueprint would really be our map, our guide, to really go into some of the sensitive areas that need shoring up, that need a new pathway. And we talked about, well, how do we make that happen? What are, what is in this plan with FICMAT that's going to move us forward? And FICMAT was very clear. We will not move you forward, but we will come in and do a study to tell us where you're vulnerable at, where those fiscal health risks are. And so this discussion tonight, led by you and your team, Nikki, is meant to, like you said, generate some discussion around what does it look like for Peralta to move forward? And that, of course, from the board's perspective, from our president's perspective, from our academic senate, and from our vice chancellors. So if there is a question that we could perhaps begin with, that could provoke some thought and generate some discussion, that would be, that would be great. So I'm going to look to you as our facilitator in that to help us a bit.
I guess the first question that I would ask you is, where do you see the connecting points among the various projects you have going on? The ACCJC, the FICMAT, enrollment management, educational master plans, the strategic plan for the district, the many pieces that you have in the district? How do you see them connecting together?
And we will open that up for anyone who would love to respond. Justee Brown? There's been a lot of discussion regarding data, disaggregation of data, our funding formulas based on data. But the real question is, what data is it that we are going to be reviewing, mining, and digesting, and how that data will guide our actions? And your question regarding how these different components fit together is that the seminal question, because we have a lot of brilliant minds working on different pieces, but we don't have a coordination or a unified approach. And the data would show us that we are in an underserved community, and that the declining enrollment is not the result of people not wanting to be in school, it's that school is not meeting them where they are. And in order to persuade and to encourage and to edify that, I think that we need the data to show that contract ed is worth investing in, that outreach that's more than just putting a newspaper article up is worth investing in, that dual enrollment is worth investing in, and that there has to be an attitude that allows us to be flexible and nimble, and that the internal structure is going to need to change because we're not keeping up. And so I think that data that is actually asking the questions that will guide us in the right direction is what we need. And there has to be an ability to work with the people that bring suggestions. There has to be conversation, but not just conversation, there has to be hearing. And I think that we're missing that. I think that there's silos that, as you mentioned in your agenda item, and those are choking the capacity of us to serve our community. And so I think that if there's anything we take from the opportunity for ACCJC and FICMAT, it's that we allow the self-analysis to be edifying and not keep ourselves safe in our silos, but actually go out and meet our community while they still care that we're here. Cindy, trustee?
I have several different comments. I'm excited that you're here. I'm actually, and I know it's probably bizarre to say, but I'm excited that FICMAT is here too as well. Because I think that there are, as Meredith was saying, as trustee Brown was saying, I think there are a lot of brilliant minds. And I see, in the short time that I've been on the board, and from what I've gleaned from all the documents from the several years, is that there is, there have been persistent problems that occurred year after year. FICMAT 2011, ACCJC 2009, 2010, 2011, all the way up to the most current. It's many of the same problems that are continually emerging. And so the question for me is part of it being, how do we move forward and ensure that action plans are not just written down on the documents for the sole purpose of being accepted on the other side by ACCJC or the chancellor's office, but that we actually use the standards? We use the information from FICMAT to truly make the district what it needs to be? And so I think integrated planning is a part of that. How does data inform our decisions, and how do those decisions get reviewed and implemented? And I think that that needs to very much work on a district level, but also, and also as well, as a college level. And we're, I think, doing it in bits and pieces and fragmented, but it's so, it's lacking cohesion on so many different levels. And how do we even begin to fulfill our mission of educating our students if we're financially also unstable? If we're upside down financially, how do we even begin to tackle all of these different directions? So I don't know if that was a comment or a question, but I'm excited that you're here because I think that this is going to be the first time, hopefully, that we can actually go forward with these problems and maneuver, navigate through with some clarity.
Let me reflect back on both of your comments just a little bit. The comment about reaching the students and having the students be able to access the college and be able to move through a pattern. We talk a lot about the student continuum, which starts with the first connection with the school to engaging with the school, registering for classes and doing all those things, progressing through a curriculum, staying in the very first classes, and then progressing or persisting through to the next semester, to the second year, and completing their program, and then either being gainfully employed in their chosen field or moving on to a university if that's where they're headed for a four-year degree. So the student continuum, it's important to look at data at all those points of contact. So you're looking at the students accessing the college to begin with, that access point. Can all the prospective students who could benefit from Peralta accessing Peralta? And if not, then why not? And where are the barriers, or where are the pockets of students that are not being captured or not being addressed appropriately that meets their needs? As you move into the continuum, you have students who drop out in the very first semester. They don't know how to go to college. Maybe they don't have the support, either the academic support, student services support, or life support skills that they need to be able to be successful. And then progressing on to the other semesters and completing their program, there are barriers and things that happen along the way. It's important that the colleges and the district work together to look at the data through that cycle to see what can be impacted. And yes, that data does need to be disaggregated. So I'll give you an example. When we did the educational master plans, that was in 2015-16, and there have been some updates along the way since then. But a district-wide look at an environmental scan of the entire area that Peralta serves, and what are the needs in that area, so that we're not just taking slices here and there, but we're looking at the whole region that you serve and say, you know, how do we best serve this region? So without digressing too far, that kind of information is really important. The educational master plans are done at each college independently, but bringing them together for a district-wide look is a piece that, actually was a recommendation at that time, to bring together and integrate these plans and have some continuity among the plans. Because they're done at different times, and they're done in different ways, and they're conducted in such a way to serve the local area that that college serves, which is important. To be locally responsive is extremely important. But the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, so the collective look at the district as a whole is another really important piece to that. To your point about the enrollment management pieces and how all of that fits together and how the pieces are integrated, we did a strategy session in September. The chancellor invited us to come and work with himself and his assistant and some of the vice chancellors and the college presidents. And we had a really good session talking about, so what are all the pieces, and where are we, and what needs to move forward from here? And there was really a lot of consensus around the table about needing to integrate those pieces. So you have educational master plans, you have enrollment plans, you have FTES targets, you have a budget allocation process. But these are done in a somewhat fragmented way. They're not brought together into an integrated whole, and they each inform each other for trying to get the best that you can get out of the process, of those processes, to really move the needle on student access, but even more importantly, student success along the way. So yes, those pieces all need to come together. Just one other little example I'll give and turn it back. In 2008, when the recession happened, Peralta, like many districts, struggled with the budget crisis that was happening at that time. And so how do we react in a budget crisis? We leave positions vacant, we centralize services, we try to do everything we can to balance the budget. But the next step of saying, okay, now we've centralized some of these services, how do we make them work really well for the four colleges? And we're all so busy and moving along that sometimes that piece gets left out. We work with colleges up and down the state. We've done, Dan, what, over fifty ed master plans in California for California colleges. And we've also worked with colleges across the country. Donna is our guru on enrollment management and scheduling processes. She does the training and has done training for a number of years for the chief instructional officers. So she's worked in the chancellor's office and been at a college. She started out as a faculty member. I think we all started out as faculty members and worked in the academic senate, so we've got that grassroots experience. Dan is our research specialist. He does all the internal and external environmental scans and looks at data and does a lot of that work. We know these pieces fit together. We know these pieces fit together, and where we see colleges struggling is in two things. One is if their planning efforts are not coordinated and integrated together, and secondly, if they have great plans but they don't have a follow-through of action and accountability and follow-up. And I think that's, you know, what you're referring to is some of that. We've had conversations since we've started this time with you this year to say, you know, Peralta's just on the edge. If they could just get that one more step, they could really shine and really serve their student population. I think you're at a really good point, and I agree with you. Actually, it's good that you have FICMAT here. It's good that you have a requirement. It's a short timeline from ACCJC, but those things sometimes are leverage points to get the collective activities. See, I told you I was going to use your comment. Collective activity together. That's really important.
Thank you for that. Trustee Weinstein.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, when I think of what we do, it's kind of like there's two things going on at the same time, and I think you would maybe see that in our government and our president as well. There's the day-to-day life of the campuses, and what we have on our agenda, things that come up, the pool, other things that we need to fix or that are broken down. So there's the day-to-day things that we are always faced with. And then there's kind of the more, I wouldn't say abstract, but the issues that we really want to get at, which are things like student success and issues of accountability, and it's almost like these two things going on at the same time. And I really think part of what's very important is to try to find a way to be able to do both of these things well. And the second thing is, because we don't communicate necessarily what the plans are or where they are six months later, we tend to repeat things over and over again, even though work has been done previously. And I think there has to be some way to communicate so that there's a history here, that we're not just starting from the beginning. People have worked hard for years and years and years, and yet we don't necessarily know that, and we have to find a way to bring that history in, as well as to find out where the areas are that we're not doing as well and we can do better. So I feel like that's where there has to be some integration, because if we do not bring up our history, if we do not know about accountability, we are going to repeat the things over and over again. And I know that we don't want to do that, so that's what I'm hoping that you can help us with.
Okay, good.
So I'm going to give everyone a heads up. If you don't start talking, I will just call you out to talk. Yes, yes, please, please do.
Thank you, Nikki and your team for being here. I didn't get the memo for yesterday's FICMAT meeting, so excuse the simplicity of my questions. I'm looking at your portfolio of work you've done with community colleges, and I see fiscal reviews, extraordinary audits, management reviews. What kind of work is FICMAT providing the district?
Well, FICMAT as an organization looks at the fiscal health of the district. They go through and look at everything related to the financial aspects of the district. So it's everything that's in your general fund budget, it's in all the unrestricted funds of the district, it's how you operate as a district, how you do the work you do, it's all the internal controls that happen, it's how you spend your money. So for example, FICMAT will look at things like, what's the balance of how much money you spend on people versus discretionary funds? Do you have enough discretionary funds to go fix the pool or whatever it is that you need to do? They'll look at that. They'll look at, are you spending the same amount of money as what you have coming in? What we call the gap, where you're spending money that you don't have by spending your ending fund balance from the year before. So you have a disconnect between your revenues and your expenses. They look at those kinds of things. They look at your union contracts and what the obligations are the district has for the future, to pay for retirees' benefits and things like that. So FICMAT is purely the financial analysis of the district, and they don't look for things to pat you on the back for to say, oh, you're doing really great in this and that. Their whole job is, because the district invites them in, their whole job is to say, here are the problem areas, here's our recommendations of what you need to address, what you need to fix. But they don't move into the level of, okay, so how are you going to fix them, or what are you going to do to address them, to actually move through that and come out in a positive light? So that's what that organization does. And then your accreditation commission, of course, accredits the college as a whole, so instruction, student services, the finances of the district, all the operations within the district, the colleges actually, because they accredit colleges. Okay? What we do in Collaborative Brain Trust is we come in and work with colleges for, and districts, for whatever their area of need is. So we do a lot of planning efforts, we do a lot of enrollment management, we do a lot of support of the student continuum as an example, for student services, to see what needs to be done. We do HR work, we do financial work, but we have about 200 consultants that work for the firm, and we assemble a team that's specifically targeted at what the needs are. For example, Dan and Donna are here tonight with me because enrollment management and needing to look at data to see, you know, what's needed are really important. We have a couple of other members of our team that have been looking at Peralta. One is a chief business officer who has also worked with FICMAT to look at, how do you then roll out an implementation plan from the FICMAT recommendations? We have a faculty member, long-term faculty member, who's really good at being a faculty liaison with the faculty to work with, Rich Hansen, if you know Rich. He works with us on those kinds of things. So we assemble a team of people that is customized to the district, and then to the point of the history that you were talking about, trustee Weinstein, the need to keep the whole process very transparent, very open. We really need engagement of people, faculty, staff, administrators from the four colleges and the district office, so that everybody's on the same page. Everybody is coming together to try to see, this is where we are, this is where we need to go, now let's get a plan in place of how we can do that in an integrated way to have success. That's a little bit of a long answer, but you bet.
Thank you for that. So, yes, V.C. Brown.
Thank you, and thank you for your insight, especially based on all the experiences you have. I wanted to tell everyone how we're sort of diving into this initially, and it really speaks to what you've been talking about. We, our first meeting, we really talked about the need to make sure that it's integrated. And so the first step is that all of the colleges, as well as the district's plans, master plans, technology plans, enrollment management plans are all updated and current. And so that when we create this five-year master plan, that we're actually taking from all of that, driving up into the five-year fiscal plan. And we found that there's really a few plans that need to be updated. People are working on them as we speak, in a collective, shared governance way. And we found that all of us, the district enrollment management plan, as well as the colleges, have to update all of those to reflect the new student-centered funding formula. We had current plans, but they need to be updated. So I think that this is a great way for us to start. The colleges are doing some work. We're all meeting on a weekly basis to update where we're at, to make sure that what we produce for this five-year fiscal plan isn't just a rush job that was created in isolation, but is actually coming from all of the colleges, all of the plans, the shared governance bodies, to create something that's real and live. In addition, we've hired, from our talented faculty, an accreditation coordinator who has a lot of experience with accreditation, and she has already just jumped right in. We've looked at six different plans around the state, multi-year fiscal plans, to see sort of the way that people have organized it, so we can make decisions around that. So I think that we're off to a good start in terms of our conception of what it is that we're to produce. And it's going to be a lot of work, but it's good work because it is taking us out of some of the silos and taking us out of a pattern where plans sometimes do sit on shelves and we all come together, you know, to create what it is that we need to create. And last point is that we also have talked about building into the plan a way, we haven't formulated this yet, but a way for our district to constantly check ourselves on the plan, to assess where we're at with it, regardless of who's in a position that is built into the structure, it's institutionalized in a way that it can't be just set aside.
Right. I think you're, that's great. I think that's a great plan of attack to get on it. When we work with colleges and districts, we like to balance the two sides. On one side, you have all the history and the background of what's going on, you have all the plans that are in place that you're updating and bringing forward in time to the current and projecting forward in time. On the other hand, you also want a fresh look so that you're not trapped in the thinking that you've had for many years. So you want both of those things. So when we work with districts, we like to do about every five years, a full internal scan and an external scan, where you set aside, you say, okay, this is all really good where we are and how we're progressing incrementally, but are there some transformative type changes that are needed by looking with fresh eyes at the data purely from today, a slice in time today, and disaggregating it to look at different pieces of it, and then looking forward? And can we, from that, glean some strategies that would be really helpful to marry with the, quote, "updating" of the existing? So it's kind of getting both, so you get that future think tank kind of concept in there as well. And one of the things that we really try to do is to bring best practices from other districts and other colleges. We have this great opportunity of seeing how something is done in 25 different ways, and maybe a particular way that we saw at another school seems like, maybe this would work for Peralta, maybe this would fit, maybe this would be a solution that would be helpful to you. So those best practices in California and also across the nation in higher ed, what are the best practices in higher ed? We try to glean some of those and infuse some of those into the planning processes as well. That's great.
Donald Moore.
How do you get structures in place on the fiscal side, right? You know, because as Cindy was saying, some reoccurring themes continue to happen. And I think there's some fundamental kinds of questions that we either need to affirm or not, or whatever. Basic ones for me are, are we decentralized? Are we centralized? Are we somewhere in between? Do we all feel comfortable where that is and what that is? We have a system set up where the four colleges compete against each other for FTEs, right? Maybe FTF as well. We don't talk to each other in terms of when we offer courses. And so as the group, as your population has shrunk, you know, people have way too many, you know, History VII A classes all at the same time. I mean, it's that kind of thing. So in one way, I think that we need some level of centralization, but we also need some level of decentralization. So how do you balance that? And I don't think, I think we've all just kind of fell into it rather than have these real critical kinds of discussions about, well, what does it mean to be centralized? What does it mean to be decentralized, right? And to really, really try to get at who we are and what is it that we have as a value as a district of these four campuses, all within, you know, five miles of each other, you know, literally. I mean, that type of core stuff that people just probably assumed, oh, they had that discussion in the early 70s, so we don't need to do it, right? But I do think that some of those, we really need to have a real clear idea about. And then finally, just the integration. I definitely think the colleges do a decent job, I'm not saying a great job, but do a decent job of integrating those different components. I think where it breaks down at is here at the district, because again, now we're trying to bring all of these different entities together with competing interests oftentimes. And it's a lot harder to do in terms of facilitating that and moving that. And I get a sense that when we go to these meetings, we just kind of talk and talk and reiterate positions, and it doesn't really get us anywhere. And so hopefully, in this process, and what you guys can help us with is really how to implement it and how to make that integration, not just on paper, but in the things we do and how we do it. So, I mean, I think any kind of help we could get that kind of way, because these are going to be some really tough discussions, but I think they can be really, really positive in the end, because what I'd like to look at is, what are we going to be three years from now, four years from now, five years from now? That's where I'm looking at. And ultimately, I get concerned because with guided pathways, the state's not going to give us tons and tons of more money. And so the question is, is what are we going to be able to free up to do the work that our athletic department does, where they have guys who could take the 24 units and actually always, you know, wrap around services? That's what they're basically doing in terms of their success. But how do we do that for, you know, x thousands and thousands of students?
How do you scale it up?
Yeah, how do you scale it up? And you have to free up more funds in order to do that, but, you know, we need to plan that for when we have to implement guided pathways, but nobody's having that discussion right now.
Well, your question, I think, is a good one because the answer isn't an either-or, it is both, as you described. You want that nimble, responsive, local approach to your student body as a college that is unique. Even though the colleges are close together, there is a unique culture. I mean, each of the four colleges at Peralta really has its own internal culture, within the staff that work there, the faculty and staff that work there, and within the community of students that attend there. But if you keep the student at the center of what you're talking about, we also know that students take classes from two or three or even four colleges in Peralta. So that would, that would tell us that the schedules need to be coordinated. There needs to be some block scheduling and some architecture around the process of scheduling programs and classes so that students can get the classes they need when they need them, even if they're going to two colleges instead of one. And streamlining it so that they complete within the timeframe they're supposed to and that guided pathways works, whether the student is going to just one college or maybe two or maybe even three. So you're right, those coordinating pieces, the structures and the processes that help you act as a collective to serve your student body is as important as locally saying, oh, students want this class, we'll just go put this class on at 10 o'clock on Wednesday. Well, that might not be the best time for it, or that might not be the best approach for it. So looking at the programs and all that, one of the answers lies in the fact of using the data to drive the discussion instead of emotions. Because, let's face it, this is people's jobs, it's their world. You know, if I'm a history teacher and you're going to have fewer sections of History VII, and I was the last one hired, I'm worried about my job. I mean, that's just human nature. So how do we reconcile that, acknowledge it, and have that be right out on the table, transparently part of the discussion, and figure out, how do we work our way through this, you know, in a meaningful way? But, you know, it can be done, and colleges do that. It's kind of like you're operating, you are a multi-college district, but you have to kind of think like you're a single college, also in that the students see you as one, and they go where they need to go to get what as one and they go where they need to go to get what they need when they need it. And if they need it at 10 o'clock and it's over here in this particular college, they're going to go there to get it. So it's working together to do all that. And and you can have great plans and great planning efforts, but if you don't bring it down to the detail, that detailed level of looking at the data and let the data drive, how many sections do you really need, projecting out in the in the new funding formula, what does the funding look like over the next three to five years when I really roll it out for our college or our district and its colleges? And and what does the data to up the both the 20% in financial aid, the 20% in student success, and the base of 60% that's still FTEs? So it's 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 all those together, you're right. And and we've worked with colleges to try to get that. And also, you know, you also have another piece no one's mentioned, and that's the vision for success. And that vision for success, also, you have to be mirroring that. So California has a lot of different facets. It's like one of those glass balls that hangs on the ceiling with all the facets around it, and you have to look at all of them, but it has to all work in tandem for it to work well. Yeah, it's it is a challenge. It's not easy, it's not an easy thing, but open, transparent, engaged, have the conversations, let the data drive the discussion rather than the emotions. Yeah.
That was that was very good. And speaking of comprehensive integrated approach, it'd be great to hear from our college presidents on any of these issues, so take your time. We're patient. Anyone, or I can call on you. Oh, President Tominek, yes. Sure, can we invite you to come sit down? We can give you a mic.
You want to come up here? Come up here.
Please do. Come, just come to the mic.
So I think this is timely. I think where we're going to need a lot of help from you is exactly what both of you are talking about. We make a lot of assumptions about the swirl being being the issue of one college taking other other colleges' students, but we don't have the data. I'm glad to know, Dan, that, you know, we have a data, but I think we need to take a look at that. And then what we struggle in terms of thinking about the guided pathway and our situation is is that it's contradiction, you know, it's a contradiction, meaning that the guided pathway wants the colleges to have a sequenced programs so that the students can ideally finish the program of studies and then all of that in one college and then in a limited amount of time, like minimum amount of time, and to be able to get their goals accomplished. But then at the same, and then it's important for us to have the collaborative option for students to be able to take courses at other places. But I think we are really dealing with this fundamentally different concept that's kind of conflicting in thinking about our enrollment management moving forward. So like, how do we create the balance? And then how do we really make sure that we serve our students the way that they need us to serve them and that we are accountable in making sure that the, you know, that we maximize the new funding formula? But this this, the fundamental concept is contradictory. And then that is something that I think we can really get a great help from you to to balance it out and then how to approach that. We are making a lot of assumptions about this world, and I feel like that's a danger zone if we don't look at the data to identify. And then this guided pathway concept to be understood by all of us as a district to be in a in alignment with what it is that we think that that is, need to be. So, anyway, that was my question.
President Tominek, can you pose your question in the mic? Yes.
Can you just do a little bit of an update on what, how you've been working in and with the integrated planning with student services, but also with the faculty and all of the departments and the instructional areas for the enrollment management part?
In terms of like coming up at the plan or just?
General activities?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So when we get the target from the district, and so we we base our conversation to be with the deans and then also department chairs, and then they are heavily involved, and we have a, and then we go through all of the the factors that are really important to be considered, so the 705 and then GP, guided pathway concept, and, you know, the new funding formula. And then we really kind of try to figure out where our focus should be and then why this accountability is happening, which is to really focus on underserved students to be able to be college-ready in a way that they deserve to be, and then to really eliminate that achievement gap, which is the 20-20 and then our district and then a colleges' plan. So we really have the framework with the faculty members and then the department chairs and then the deans. And then within that, then we make sure that we stay within the FDIF allocated and then to maximize the course offerings. And then just trying to really think about the sequencing. So we look at all the programs and certificates and then that we offer. And then in the CE area, is that really meeting that, you know, the labor market demands or not? And, you know, and then the faculty member really have to have a conversation and then sometimes advisory committee are involved in that conversation. But so the comprehensive conversation happens that way, but I think, so what what we see that that might be a challenge sometimes is the emotion versus the data. And then so, you know, it's a natural reaction to it, but that we bring, we collaborate with the research department and then our researcher brings the comprehensive data for us to take a look at. So that's how we make decisions. And Integrated Planning Committee is somebody who's going to, who's looking at the program review and then all of that, and we incorporate those outcomes into our decision-making. And then also, we really leverage in that guided pathway format and then what you were talking about, this like four sequences. And and then students are on each one of the committees and then so the design team and then we are all looking at the, well, hearing the student voices as well to make sure that qualitative, you know, comments and all of that are included in our in our decision-making about the sequencing. So it's work is in, still, I mean, like, it's just beginning, but those are the framework that we are using.
So thank you, VPI Hay. And then what I wanted to do was kind of get back to what the conversation has been earlier. So Trustee Brown talked about, for example, as a district and with the colleges, we haven't been leveraging dual enrollment, you know? So the students want to come, but what are we doing in terms of making it, facilitating, you know, their access to all of our colleges? So as you know, BCC is a little bit behind. We've been behind in the dual enrollment. And so with the new Student-Centered Funding Formula, we're on track now in terms of dual enrollment and working with all of the USD partners so that we can scale that up similar to our sister colleges.
That's great. We can continue on.
So I just want to, so a couple of thoughts about integrated planning and us working together and some, so this afternoon, I had an opportunity to look at the Student-Centered Funding Formula and look at actually data from our district and then what it would mean for Laney and kind of getting a sense of like baseline where, you know, where we could do better and sort of bringing in Pell students or what we could do better in terms of getting degree completions and things like that. And one of the interesting conversations that I had with our research analyst was that really actually a lot of the students are duplicated across the colleges. So it does make it really difficult to be able to, again, create a funding budget allocation model that actually looks at things. So we began to brainstorm out ideas of like ways that we could dissect the data to think about, you know, what it meant for the college. So for instance, is it home campus versus is it, who takes most units where, or is it all the? So it was really a very fascinating thing. But at the end of it, what ultimately ended up happening for me personally was thinking that this sort of dive that we were sort of taking is actually, could be very destructive to the four colleges and the collaboration that I think is wanting to be made to create competition when we don't want to do that, right? And then how do we sort of think holistically about, even using guided pathways, even in a district-wide thing? There are really interesting things that have happened in community colleges that I've been in where there's been joint degrees between two colleges and two different districts, you know? So I think that there are ways to think about how we sort of holistically do things. It's about the opportunity and the willingness and time to want to have those conversations. And I think there is. So I think Flex Day was a wonderful District Flex Day, and I want to give kudos again to our district-wide coordinator, PD coordinator, Scott Houshida and Dr. Brown and other folks who worked on it. But there was time for these discipline-specific meetings across the district. I had the great honor to sit in on the chemistry meeting and get to facilitate. One of the wonderful things about that meeting was there was talk about the shared prerequisite. There was a talk about why we're scheduling over each other. There was a talk about questions that they didn't know from an administrative level that I was actually able to answer just because I happened to be there to give some, you know, perspective about things. And there was a sense that they were saying, like, how do we create the mechanism to not schedule over each other? And they were talking about higher-level chem classes, why we would keep those at a lower rate than than, you know, these particular ones, and which campus is better suited, right? Who actually has the lab space? Like a campus was talking, one of the colleges was talking about adding, you know, this higher-level class because they felt their physics students needed it. And what they, people said was, but you don't have a lab space for it, and we have other campuses that do. These need to be the conversations we're having, and I think they're ripe for having them. We just need the right facilitation and the right support sort of to do to do that work. Another thing that's been happening, we've been working a lot at Laney College on our work with formerly incarcerated and systems-impacted students. And we've been writing a lot of grants and support to try to really move in and think about how we more thoughtfully serve in our local community and make sure that we're doing the bridging that needs to happen. But that takes a collaborative effort. And so Dr. Brown actually happened in her discipline meeting, was sitting in on the ethnic studies faculty, talking about what more could we do? So there is energy out there. So she actually brought together faculty today. They had this great conversation about the college president is working with us on this grant and we're trying to work with Glendire, you know, and and how can the vice chancellor's office be well? So there's lots about, I think, the synergy of of us. I think there's a lot of good things in the district that need to be illuminated and, you know, connected. And I think with a good process and support, I think the plans that we're all doing, we're doing similar things at the colleges. So I'm I'm hopeful about getting the additional support that we need to sort of foster these kind of things. And I'm hoping I'm answering the question that you asked.
No question, there's no question. But yeah, sharing is good.
Yeah, so I just felt like what you were saying about creating this district-wide framework of bringing these disparate plans together, updating, we don't have updated district-wide strategic, you know, like, how do we really like kind of, you know, create a vision for the district and then how does the, how do the colleges help sort of meet those, the mission and vision? Sorry. Thanks.
Everything she said. I think all of us are working on the same thing and then that's, it's been a real interesting and challenging situation, given that many of us do offer some of the same, at least the same courses, if not the same programs. So, yes, we all are looking at how we can work together and be able to share that without feeling as though we're losing FTEs from individual colleges. So that's a challenge in itself. I'm at Merit, our enrollment management, well, actually, our enrollment management, Strategic Enrollment Management Committee began with the Academic Senate. They developed a philosophy and moved forward on that. And so now we're continuing that, given the the charge that we have from this week at looking at, okay, let's go back to your campuses, let's look at your, all your different plans, but particularly in the enrollment plan. And we have everybody on that committee. It's headed by a dean at this point, but we do have folks on that committee from classified faculty, administrators, et cetera. So we're putting those things together, we're updating our plan. The unique, well, maybe not quite unique, but unique for Merit right now is that our researcher left. So we're trying to gather and we're trying to work with academic affairs here at the district to help us with, because we don't have anyone to pull the data and coordinate and lead from that perspective. And that always makes everyone very nervous, particularly when you're trying to do program review and all these other things and you don't have the numbers that you need. So Dr. Brown has said that that they will help support Merit as much as possible with that research piece. But we're pretty much doing similar kinds of things as the other colleges. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you for sharing.
All right. Last but not least, I'll try to be brief, just not going over what my colleagues have said, because we all are doing the same kind of planning at our colleges. We've had an enrollment management framework, which you can also call a plan at our college since 2016. I usually like to use a framework better than a plan because a framework is just a bigger chunk and we pivot it every year. So this year, we're going to start pivoting it towards the new Student-Centered Forming Funding Formula with guided pathways and AB 705, but realizing that's going to take a while to unpack. We won't get there by May, you never get there, actually. It's always iterative and generative. And so we're just having those conversations. I think what's exciting about possibly working with the Brain Trust and having Thicmat here, which I think is great, and even having a silver lining out of getting an ACC JC letter, which is sometimes hard to do, but, you know, being a good trooper, is they are learning experiences and they will help us move forward. And then what will happen, new knowledge will be created and we'll pivot all of our current plans. So sometimes with my college, I think any college, you get so focused again, it's like, oh, it's plan updating time, and we know how to do that. We're really, we're actually quite skilled at that. But it's like, that's not the real point. The point is that bigger point. And I think having this overlapping framework and having outsiders coming with best practices from other multi-college districts will help us to get there, to get the next step. So, yeah, so we're we're ready to work.
I'd like to add in a comment about the FTEs targets because several of you have mentioned FTEs targets. And we find that that colleges tend to be in the thinking that my FTE target, my FTEs target has to be the same as last year plus one, plus two, plus three, whatever it is. In a multi-college district, not necessarily does every college need to be the same and growing. You might have one college that needs to shrink or another college that needs to grow double. It has to be an intentional plan, a very intentional plan based on the data about where are the students and what do the students need? What are the workforce needs in the area? What are the kinds of classes and programs that are needed and which college perhaps is best suited to offer that particular thing? You don't want to duplicate all the programs because the local community is crying out for nurses, let's say. You don't want to have nursing programs at all four colleges, perhaps. So it's sitting down intentionally with the the vice chancellor for educational, that's you, right, for educational planning and the presidents or, more importantly, probably the vice presidents of instruction, and working together on what what is a realistic target? We hear, well, we need the target to be our base level of where we used to be. And then we also hear, let's do our FTEs target with the enrollment that is actually coming through the door. And neither of those is probably the right answer. The right answer lies with the data showing what can you produce, what do you think you can produce with some intentional processes and some targets and some desired outcomes? So you're you're trying to get more outcomes focused so that you have some measures that can go along with that through time to see how you're progressing. And maybe college A needs to grow 3%, maybe college B needs to stay flat. It, that's where you're working collectively, that's where you're working together. And then everybody's on board with, these are the programs and classes that we're going to offer, and if we do what we say we're doing, we know we will end up with this many FTEs. Then the allocation to the college can be the FTEs target for that college plus the dollars for that college through your allocation model plus the staffing that's needed to produce that. So those follow the discussion of where it needs to be. So trying to, that's where you work in an integrated fashion so that you don't get into this competitive into this competitive mode. And all of you, I, I think, you know, I heard, you're trying to not compete with each other, but yet everyone is, you know, has the charge of, we've got to grow enrollments, we've got to grow enrollments. The intentional plan is what should grow the enrollments. And that, and that's where I hear you're all working on those kinds of things, and how do you pull all that together into a unified whole? That's the challenge, because it's not easy. It's, it's very difficult to do.
And so I'd like to encourage our student trustee, Jordan, to say, to ground this in an actual student. It's grounding all of this high-level, integrated systems and controls and, and whatnot. So I'm going to go ahead and turn the mic over to her.
So thank you, Nikki, for saying what you said earlier before the presidents talked about being one college. Like, the presidents always, they're trying to keep up the momentum of one college, and so I really appreciate that. Going to different colleges within the district, as a student, there is this, oh, I go to this college, I go to that college. However, we're all Parata students. And so when I ran for student trustee, that was my initial goal, is that we're just really blessed, because we have four different campuses, but we're all Parata students. So like currently, I'm taking some classes at Alameda College, even though my home school is Laney College. And some of the things that we're discussing, as far as, as far as like financial and the rules for financial aid that have been changed, have hurt some of my friends, and they have not been able to go to school, because they're waiting for an appeal. Some students have different barriers, and I, there are, there's data there to address those, those items. I don't know. Yeah, so the whole guided pathways, and I may be wrong, so feel free to correct me. But say I go and visit my counselor, and then we decide I'm going to take four courses in the fall, we decide I'm going to take four courses in the spring. And say, out of the four courses, I decided that, we decided collectively that I was going to take, I only was able to register for two of them, because maybe I didn't meet the requirement for one of the classes that I wanted to take out of the four, right? And then the other one is offered at a time that I work. So now I will have to file an appeal, because my, appeal process, because my student educational plan does not coincide with the plan that, for the guided pathway, that we, that we, you know, worked on in the fall, and it's spring now. So with this new law that was passed for the financial aid, that put another monkey wrench in waiting for the, the help that a lot of the students need, even though a lot of our students work and are really dependent upon the different grants and resources that are available to them. So what was, okay, so my point is, I know that everyone is working really hard, and we're really appreciative of everything that everyone is doing. However, a lot of students have not been able to return to school. We look at that, the student success rate, right? Or how many students are enrolled? And it's starting to look like certain students are not being allowed access, because the language is not for them. However, there used to be access, and now there isn't access. And so just like our award-winning football team that traveled from Stockton, and you heard him say, oh, I feel better here, because this is like home, he feels better here, right? So I would say that, like trustee Weinstein was saying, that there are many different things that are going on, but how do, like Mr. Moore said, collective, we, we can put them together, but a lot of students are being, I don't think it's necessarily intentional, because I'm not an expert, so I won't say that it's intentional, right? But what I viewed, and what the data shows, if we look at the data, is that certain schools are lacking in hiring teachers that look like the students that they serve, or understand the community that they serve. Students are not being, gaining access to the classes. I know someone right now who was, who basically just had to drop out of school, because they can't wait on the appeal. I'm really thankful that my appeal was granted, but I, I, there's a lot of people that are not, you know, in, it just takes time, right? So the students who do have financial access are, they're at classes with their books right now, but the, some of, a lot of them are not. So what can we do? Because we, we see the effects of, and I don't want to say we see the effects of gentrification, but then we got to keep it real, too, right? A lot of Oakland natives are not here anymore, and they live elsewhere, but they feel comfortable coming to Laney, because maybe their mom went to Laney, or maybe all of their elementary school friends are at Laney right now. So just taking into consideration like these laws that are being passed, and to make them smoother, I guess, I don't know, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, trustee Jordan, I think you bring up a really good point. So as we're talking about integrative services and streamlining and student support services and wraparound services and systems and controls and everything else that doesn't mention the student, this is where the rubber hits the road, right? This is where we look at losing students, losing students who have to navigate a very fractured and siloed institution. And, and I think that's, that's exactly what you're getting at, the impact on students not being able to fit into this perfect mold of a guided pathway, who then all of a sudden are penalized through not receiving financial aid. And so that, I think, is a discussion that is, that's kind of undergirding all of this other pieces around, as a community college, who are we serving? Who are we intent on serving? Thank you for that, student trustee Jordan. VC Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. I think that, I'm, I'm happy that the FedMac team is here, because I definitely believe that data should drive our decisions. And the reason why data needs to drive our decisions, because some decisions are hard to make. And it's necessary that if you're going to have administration team, we should build a model that works for Parata around student success, not around individual positions, because if we like that person at that time, we need to build a structured model internally that actually serves students. And there are a lot of good models out there. And I think that Parata is not limited, that we can't be fixed. I think this is an opportunity, and we just need to come together as a team and to move forward. This integrated model, what it's going to do, it's going to set a system in place that needs to be revisited yearly, and it brings planning into our structure, it brings shared governance in the process, and it makes decisions based on data, not on people's opinion, how they feel about it that day or that time. It makes information, this whole finding form is about students, and that's what we are invested to do with students. And I'm glad we're focusing on the real issue. As I always say, the budget is just a symptom of what the problem is, is a fiscal analysis of what's going on. But where our products are students, and they are revenue, source of revenue, they are why we're in business, and, and we, if we stay focused and drive towards this student's success and do right by our students, our facilities, our structure, we'll be okay.
I wanted to respond to one thing that you said when you described that the budget is just a symptom of, of what the reality is of working with students. We're often called into districts because they're in a fiscal crisis, and so the tendency is to go and fix the budget. Well, you, you can reduce staff, you can hold positions vacant, you can do a lot of things within your operational budget, and that's just a drop in the bucket. The, the, as you say, the money comes from students, because students are our business. So it's, it's really important that the enrollment management piece is done in conjunction with the fiscal piece, because they're one and the same, they are the same animal. And oftentimes, people want it, well, we'll fix the financial piece, and then we'll get around to that enrollment management fluffy stuff later. That's not the fluffy stuff, that is the core, that is the core. And if you can get your plans integrated, streamline your processes so that you're not wasting 10 steps when you could do it in five steps, that kind of thing, look at centralized versus decentralized processes. If you do all that, look at the, that you have inside the college, but even more importantly, external to the college, in the community, and from the student population, from the workforce and everything else that's out there, and take all that and do your enrollment management. If you work on those pieces, you won't have a fiscal crisis, because that's what fixes it. It's, you don't just go fix the budget, that, that's not the way that you get there. So I, I like your point about, you know, they, they go hand in hand, and it's the focus on the student. And if you get students in the door, and you serve them well, and you remove the barriers, and you help them stay in class and persist to the next class and progress through their curriculum and through their program, that will solve your fiscal problem, right there. So.
Ms. T. Gonzalez?
Thank you. I've really appreciated a lot of the comments tonight. It's been a very thoughtful and collaborative discussion, which I've really appreciated. I'm thinking that where we are right now is going to require kind of a, a long-term view, and then a short-term, like, can we just get in balance so that we don't flip over? Because we've got some, some immediate crises that we need to deal with. But as I look at, at the challenges, a lot of these are really deep structural challenges. I've been sitting here just kind of taking notes and so forth, and, and any one of the 30 things that I've got written on my notepad here could really kind of sink us. One of the, I'm going to keep this brief, one of the things that I, I note that happens is that we talk about students and the necessity of serving students, which I completely believe. But what's often missing is those people who are directly interacting with students, kind of most, most directly, people in student services, our frontline staff, you know, right on the, right on the financial aid counter, right in the admissions and records, and then, of course, the faculty. And in some ways, there's a real disjuncture between the systems, the administrative systems, and then the actual business of, and, and now we've got sort of two businesses. One is supporting student lives, and then there's the educational component that we traditionally used to think of was the primary job of colleges. You would teach a class in sociology or whatever it is, and then somebody else was going to be dealing with that student's housing or, or food needs. And now we're being asked to kind of look at that whole thing and take that on, which is fine. I mean, that's what I think maybe the community colleges are doing. But it seems to me that oftentimes now, there's actually a, a complete disjuncture from those core functions, and then what happens at the administrative level. And I'll just use this one example. We have this new funding formula, which was almost uniformly opposed by those of us who actually work day-to-day with students, the, the academic senates and, and the unions, almost universally imposed. That was imposed, that was imposed on us, and now we have to deal with it. All right. But I actually have zero faith that if we hit those metrics, we're actually going to be doing a better job with our students. I think so often that what happens is somebody who is very disconnected from the lives of, of real students, has some flavor of the day, new initiative, you know, comes down from Lumina or Gates or whatever it is, and we try it on for a few years, and then we just got in the battleship to turn a teeny bit, and then they come up with a new thing. And we're like, okay, well, let's try to shift this back. But in the meanwhile, what actually happens in real student lives, we're just trying to make do and, and make the best of it. And so in this whole process of trying to right us, both in the short term and the long term, I'm really hoping that, in fact, the actual experience of real students can be front and center, and that those of us who are working day-to-day with students, really, that, that process of shared governance, the wisdom of shared governance, which is built into the law, is actually honored in this district. Thanks.
Thank you. So just doing a quick time check, is there anyone else who would like to, so I have two. I have VC Whitaker, and then after that, I have VC Sifra.
First, I just want to say thank you for coming. You've given us some great advice tonight. I'd like to also say that a lot of the things that you've mentioned throughout your presentation tonight are some of the things that our own administrators have been saying and have been screaming, basically, as ways to turn this ship around. And another thing you, you've mentioned a lot is buying into the vision. When you have very talented individuals at the table, and they're saying, this is what we have to do, I have this experience, I've been down this road before, I can turn this ship around, how do you get everyone to buy into that vision when there are so many competing ideas? And the second part of my question is, you've mentioned a lot about transparency, and we throw that word around a lot, but how do we comply with transparency when people are scared of being transparent? When we're scared of putting the numbers and the data out there because of what it's going to reflect back on us, when that's exactly what we have to do to get better? So those are my two questions.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's fine.
Nikki, did you want to respond, or do you want to hear the rest of?
Why don't we go ahead with, yeah.
Sure. Thank you very much for being here tonight. You know, I, again, I, I want to echo, great discussions, great points. From my perspective, though, I just really want us to be cognizant that in any of these new policies, procedures, AB whatever, and that's added from the state, there's an operational component to it. So I appreciate when President Bonilla says rubber, rubber hitting the road, because I think I had the pleasure, I had the pleasure of sitting in with the classified staff, for example, and they want to be part of all the initiatives. But at the same time, it seems like they, they're always changing, and it's also changing our processes. So I appreciate when we identify best practices so that we're not lost in the process. We have a lot of great ideas, but really, how do we operationalize them is one of my biggest concern. We need to operationalize, otherwise it's just grand ideas out there. And we have to operationalize it with the least barrier for students. And then the other comment that I would like to have is, I also like bringing best or new strategies in, because, again, we always see the same findings, for example, not in compliance with financial aid. And some of the rules with financial aid, all of the rules in financial aid are not new. They've been there, but we haven't had the structural integrity to comply with them, and we've been getting kind of like the, we'll give you a pass this time, because we know that you're not doing this. But we cannot assume that that will be the next case with the next audit or the next program review. So case in point, I like what trustee Jordan is saying, we have a lot of students with needs, but we cannot use financial aid to address all of their needs, because we are putting ourselves in non-compliance and jeopardizing the whole program, right? So we need to bring in another initiative, like other districts would save a portion of their funding for needs-based programs. So maybe we can, we can support students who are no longer qualified with financial aid without hurting the program. So bringing things like that and having those discussions really help us become more proactive, but also secure. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss.
Thank you. We have another speaker, Dr. Akaro.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. My perspective is twofold. One has to do with facilities, and the other one has to do with the environmental scan and where do our students come from, and what are the issues that are involved. From the facility perspective, we, as a district, has not done a good job in funding everyday requirement for maintenance, or what you call deferred maintenance of our buildings. And this is, it's not a matter of building new ones or, and the rest of it, but the existing ones need to be maintained adequately so that there will be an environment that is conducive for teaching and learning. Because if students are taking tests in a classroom that is cold, it has adverse impact. So essentially, we, the budget that we have been utilizing for the last fifteen years to be able to build facilities only addresses about twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the need of Paralta. So we've had committees to work together and see if we can have a line item where some funded could be allocated by colleges to be able to fix everyday nuances, and that has not worked over time. I'm saying this because we're talking about swimming pool tonight, some of the ways by which we could get funding at all to do the swimming pool was to go to Prop 39, which was state funding, and see how we can have PG&E give us incentive to get some new heaters for the pool, and that is how some of the funding came about. Because there was not actually funding for, to rego and renovate and be able to have new heaters for the pool that we're having issues with tonight. That being said, we also need to have what you call total cost of ownership. The elevators we have throughout the district were built forty-five, fifty years ago. There needs to be adequate budget to be able to see that they are maintained on a regular basis. Yes, there are budgets to do this, but it has been extremely difficult to be able to get what is needed to fix existing infrastructure, especially at Lenny College, which is one of our biggest colleges here. Then the other part has to do with total cost of ownership. When the classroom is clean, when the hallways are clean, the student and faculty and everybody likes it, do we have enough custodians to be able to do all of that? When we build new buildings, do we calculate the level of dinginess that we want to attain in those buildings by seeing that the square footage area that is needed per custodians are hired to go do the work? So the total cost of ownership has issues. The deferred maintenance has issues. So that is on the everyday ongoing nuances that impact enrollment, because students vote with their faith. Then the second part of my comment has to do with environmental scanning. Demographic have changed in our area here, in the last ten to fifteen years. So therefore, who are our students, where do they come from, how are we addressing the issue of housing? It's difficult for those that have employment to live and work in Oakland because of resurgence of people coming from San Francisco. So therefore, if we have two colleges here, how can those students be able to come to our schools, and what is it that we can do collaboratively through PPA or P3 to be able to get housing issues addressed for our student? Not only the local student, but international students that come from other countries, that is a good source of revenue. And then when these students come, how are we dealing with the issue of glitches with registration? Because if you cannot get registered properly and the rest of it, then they go to a college where they can easily get it. So there are various of things that you see on every day that impact students, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you for sharing that. Would you like to?
Sure. I'll try to go backwards and remember the comments, but remind me if I didn't hit all the points. In your discussion about deferred maintenance, first of all, a question back to you, in the new bond that you passed where you have facility renovations involved with that bond money, I'm sure that you do, do you see, once that bond money is spent for renovations and new facilities, that you will equalize out, that the deferred maintenance level will come up to where it needs to be with more renovated facilities?
It will help. It will help certainly, because some of those buildings, that, some of those buildings that are currently in disrepair, we'll be able to do modernization of those buildings is going to help and reduce the infrastructure issues when it is implemented. But right now, we are where we are, and it's going to take four years down the line to be able to actualize all of that.
Right. And your point about the total cost of ownership is extremely important, it doesn't matter whether you're talking about technology or a building, if you're going to build a new building, you want to have the total cost of ownership of heating it, cleaning it, the custodial staff, staffing it, and doing all the things that you need in that, in that package of a total cost of ownership. So, yes, that would, it should fall into your budget allocation model and where staffing would be included, and those kinds of things should be in that process. I think the issues that you raise are in the area of having effective and efficient processes and having data to help support that. The environmental scan piece is one that has to do with having the data of where are the students, where are the prospective students, where are students not able to access the institution for whatever reason? And are you serving the district as a whole? Most of the environmental scanning that's been done here has been done college by college by college rather than the larger picture, so having both of those would be really important, I think. You want the individual colleges as well, but you want the larger picture of the whole Paralta district. So that's really important. Back to your comments over here on this side, part of your question on having an operational plan is the answer to the transparency. When you have an operational plan laid out that says, these are the things we're going to do, here are the people who are going to be involved, these are the faculty or classified staff or deans or whoever that are going to be working on this particular piece, here's the outcome we're trying to get, here's our timeline, you have checkpoints along the way of how it's going to occur, that is your transparency, and you get agreement on all of that upfront, and that takes away some of the emotional piece, too. There's nothing worse than someone needing something and not knowing if it's ever going to be addressed, rather than a five-year plan that has an operational piece to it that says, oh, I see, the thing that I really need is in year three. Okay, I can take a breath and wait a minute because I know it's going to come up eventually, it's going to be here. So I think your comments kind of go together of what you're talking about, but the efficiency of operations is really important as well as the work on student enrollment and everything else so that it works smoothly. Because when the rubber hits the road for the student, like Ayesha was talking, she left, what she was talking about, you know, what she needs is an answer on that appeal process, and that, that has to do with efficient processes that move in a streamlined way because that comes right back to help the student. So that's just an example, but, yeah.
Thank you for that. And we are going to wrap up this conversation, so would you like to have some kind of ending words, or I can, I could do it also, so?
A couple of things that haven't been mentioned that I think are important to probably point out. We've talked a lot about the fiscal improvement plan and what needs to, you know, happen with that because that's due May first. So working on that is a real priority. Enrollment management and all the ins and outs, we've talked quite a bit about that, that's a second key priority area. Third is the efficiencies, which you brought up in some of the comments that you made over there. But efficient operations, looking at centralized versus decentralized services and how they all work, how that all works. What hasn't been mentioned is executive turnover or administrative turnover, the district has a lot of turnover in, at every level, whether it's chancellor or presidents or vice presidents or deans, you know, there's a lot of churn in the district. It would be good to know more about that, of why that's happening, and are there strategies that you could employ that would help that turnover? Because whenever you have turnover, then there's a learning curve. If I'm starting new as a vice president of instruction or president of a college, I have to, the first thing I want to do is meet all the people, I want to know the faculty and staff, and I want to get to know the processes and things, so there's a lag. And the more of those you have, the more lag or downtime you have rather than active time. So that executive turnover is kind of a fourth area that is important. The fifth one that you've touched on, but I don't know the interest that you have as a board, is looking at the workforce that's out there. You kind of talked about it a little bit in looking at who the students are that are out there, you talked about it with the, it'd be of benefit to you to have that kind of survey data of where the workforce is and where the people are that are out there that are trying to access community college education. I think it would be helpful to you, you know, to have that deeper dive look at that. And then, lastly, distance education, no one has mentioned that, but we do see a shift everywhere in distance education. More and more face-to-face classes are now hybrid classes, more hybrid classes are going to fully online, and so you have a real mix and a pretty quick pace of how that's moving forward. The one hundred and fifteenth college plan to have a distance-ed college in the state of California, there's a lot of opposition against that, there's a lot of controversy over that. There is one good thing in that, and that is that they, the state is likely having money made available for individual colleges to ramp up or perfect or strengthen their online program. And, you know, that would be something you may want to think about getting in on the ground level of some of that money, because operations is where you need the money. You need teachers and you need processes and you need things to make your online program a robust and healthy and effective program for students. So those are kind of, I think that was six, six different areas that we see when we look at Paralta of things that are likely needed.
Thank you for that, Nikki.
And otherwise, I would just say thank you very much for having us. We love your district and we really enjoy the discussion. Thank you.
That's great. Well, you've been doing some, quite a bit of work here over the past several years, and so I think it would be a good time now to get some direction from the board on, or say thank you for receiving, but sure, sure.
I would like to know what pathways or what resources are available to learn more about some of those things that you mentioned regarding the environmental scan, the conditions which promote administrative, administrator turnover. Those are things that a board is concerned about because they are costly in terms of time wasted, difficulty implementing plans. It's beneficial to have a independent third party, say things as Trustee, I'm sorry, V.C. Whitaker has mentioned, things can be said internally that are not listened to, but when they're said from a third party, they can be accepted with less resistance. And there, we need to know how to analyze in a way that's not surface, that's not trite, or that does not allow people to stay in their silos or stay in their positions of comfort that are actually detrimental to the district. And if there is a manner in which we could do that, I'd like to get a suggestion on how we could make that transformation.
Yeah, there are a number of practices, I don't know if you've done a lever, they call them lever studies, a lever study for staff, like you have a lever study for students, why did they leave, kind of thing, so you can do a lever study.
Not turning the lever, but leaving the building.
The person is a lever, like L-E-A-V-E-R, that kind of a study where you look at, you know, why did the person leave, you know, and what were the factors? I don't know if you've done anything like that, I've not seen anything in all the materials I've reviewed from your district. I don't know if either of you have seen that, I haven't seen anything like that, but that's one approach, is to look at that. We do know that there are some common threads across colleges of why people leave, obviously, career advancement is one of the reasons, but many times, there are other factors involved. So, you know, just as, that's just an example, but those are some of the things that we would look at doing if we were going to investigate that portion of the college, of the district to try to help you with it.
Thank you very much for your presentation and those suggestions.
Thank you.
And so, it would be nice to get a general sense from our trustees, our trustees right now, on your thoughts about this dialogue and a general sense of where you think you'd like to see maybe some next steps take place.
I think one question that I would like to know is, how, what is going to be your role? What should we be expecting, how long for? Because I think many of the discussions have brought up data being emotional, finding ourselves in unintentional places of liminality where we don't know if we're centralized or decentralized, and without the intention of actually having those conversations. And also, as Tamile was saying, the sense of delving into the data and having that be possibly destructive. So going back to, are you going to be facilitating those conversations and leading those conversations, or are you going to be on the side as we have those conversations, hoping for the most productive way to actually have those hard conversations so that at the end of those hard conversations, we have action plans and ways to navigate through the muck, or navigate through?
Yeah, right, I understand, I understand. I'll go back to Trustee Gonzalez's comment about short-term and long-term because you do have two venues in mind. I mean, you've got a short-term project, you know, right on the horizon right now, this semester, that needs to be addressed right away. But you have long-term things that you're trying to address as well. We like to do our work in basically four quadrants of, we call it discovery, and those four quadrants are, two are on the quantitative side and two are on the qualitative side. On the quantitative side, we like to look at data, numbers, do surveys and collect data and do things like that inside of the colleges, inside the district, and then we, the second quadrant being outside of the district. So the environmental scans internally and externally generates a lot of data for you to look at. It's a good idea as a board to look at that information, to look at that data, what does this tell you about your district of what you have? And then the other two quadrants are qualitative, so we like to do a lot of interviews and discussions and surveys with areas for comments, for people to say things, and that's everything from students to student forums to staff that work here, to the community and the people that you work with in the community, those kinds of things. So it's as deep as you want it to go. Your question about how long, it depends on how comprehensive you want this process to be, and how many of those strands I mentioned, like those, I mentioned six, I think, strands, do you want us to tackle all six of those or just three of those, or, you know, where do you want to go with that? So how many strands you cover and the length of time that it takes and how deep you want to go would determine the length. You essentially have this semester that you need to, that you're needing to address your ACCJC requirements. Your FICMAT process, the study agreement goes till December, but they likely will finish before that. So you have the rollout of the, of implementing and having a plan for implementing with accountable junctures in it for implementing strategies based on the FICMAT review. The FICMAT review does, works predominantly in the district office, it doesn't work in the colleges very much, and it gives you a set of recommendations, but it doesn't tell you, okay, so here's what you're going to do, and how does it roll out to the colleges? You know, they, obviously, the colleges is where, that's where the students are, is in the colleges, so that's where you want it to connect together. So you have that piece as well. So you're looking at, you know, probably some stages of information, it would take this semester to do the discovery phase of all those processes, next year to work on the long-range kinds of things and to implement the rollout of FICMAT and some of those other things. I think when we lay it out to see what it is, you know, that's the way, it's also helpful to have it cross two or three academic years because it spreads the money out for you, the cost, so that's helpful as well. So, that.
Any other comments? Yes?
I'm not sure how, I'm going to segue into this, but Ayesha mentioned removing barriers for students and the colleges, we're talking about synergy, not trying to compete with one another, but collaborating. and the colleges were talking about synergy, not trying to compete with one another, but collaborating. I know that there is a large following of people who will rally for students who need financial assistance and will talk to the legislators and fix what needs to be fixed so then more students can get the financial resources they need. But I'm kind of worried about, there are solutions that seem like they're in front of us, but there's just a lack of urgency. I don't know who I'm supposed to talk to, so I'm just looking at everyone. So right now, if I wanted to take a class at Alameda, if I had a disability, then I'd have to go to that college's disability department to get my accommodation letters. But right now, there's a lack of synergy between the colleges where we're basically using mounds and gobs of file cabinets and it's redundant, ridiculously redundant to get your accommodations secured at another school, at another college. And it takes time, especially at the semester's beginning. It's really discouraging for students because students are busy. It's chaotic, but it makes all the difference because when students don't have their accommodations letters at the very beginning, crucial weeks of class, then that's the pivotal point where they either decide to stay with the class or they just leave. And right now, if you have a physical disability, psychological disability or any other kind of disability, you can't have that honored unless you go through this process of re-verifying, re-interviewing to receive something you should already have. It's just a matter of prioritizing it. There are people like Ron Nelson from Merritt College and Roberto Gonzalez from Berkeley City College who are ready to make this happen, but they're just waiting on to hear, it sounds like from PeopleSoft or just, there's a lack of communication and they're ready to go. I mean, there are a few thousand students at the DSBS department compared to people. I'm just concerned that there's not enough advocacy for students who are seriously in need and they, their needs aren't being met. And I don't know who to address that to, I'm just putting that out here. Yep.
Now, I, we appreciate that. I think that's part of the, where the rubber hits the road, right, for the students. So if our systems aren't in place and they're not connected and they're not, there's not a process in place, your experience, which is choppy in nature and just disconnected, is a true reflection of the system not working cohesively for our students. So I deeply appreciate you sharing that. Thank you. I know we are way over time. We definitely, I think there was a deep appreciation from all. This was one of the first, I think, full and comprehensive dialogues that we had with all of our executive cabinet staff. So this, this was good and I hope that the trustees feel that way also. So Nikki, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will, can we get a motion to extend our time? Where is, where is trustee Whitrow? I count on you paying attention to these things.
Chair, I would move that we extend the meeting for 15 more minutes. That would make it at 10:27.
And we have a second, thank you. And there's consensus, thank you so much. Chancellor's report.
For the chancellor's report, I'd like to ask President Gilchristson to give you a brief update on the fire watch Laney had been subjected to and kind of where we are on that.
On January 10th and 11th, Oakland Fire was on site to perform life safety inspections. During their visit, they found a host of deficiencies, the most urgent being the fire alarm panels. All buildings, with the exception of the Laney childcare, had troubled alarms on their fire panels, so the campus was placed on fire watch. Fire watch consists of having every building checked every hour of every day that the campus is open by someone who is assigned specifically and exclusively only to do that task. Safety aides performed the fire watch until school opened on January 22nd, when ABC Security began providing the service. They are approved vendor for fire watch with Oakland Fire Department. To be removed from fire watch, all alarm panels must be free of troubled alarms, certified by Simplex Grinnell and verified by the Fire Department. Simplex has been on campus performing their inspections and creating a deficiency report. No repairs, just inspections that should be completed by the end of this week. Fifty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars has been encumbered for repairs. Simplex had a technician on site last week to work on the alarm panels. He was able to correct several panels, however, there have not been any certified buildings yet. So all buildings are still on fire watch. While the inspection was in progress, the January 10th and 11th, we received an email from Kelly Lynch-McMahon advising that there were several deficiencies that had not been addressed from a 2015 inspection. DGS engineers explained that there have been problems with funding. This critical need and previous managers had been unsuccessful in getting contracts approved. At the March 27th, 2018 board meeting, the board approved the Tyco Simplex Grinnell contract submitted by Director Lynch-McMahon for district-wide fire alarm compliance work to be funded from Fund 61 scheduled maintenance. The contract runs through June 2019. While the budget was approved, the project was not funded at that time. And apparently, the director McMahon was told that there were not adequate funds available in scheduled maintenance and it was suggested to break up the project, perhaps over fiscal years. DGS has received the various reports and quarterly inspection reports with many repeated items, some very critical. These reports were not provided to the campus in the past. Moving forward, we request that we receive our reports so we can follow up accordingly. Note that the fire alarm panels are a small part of the overall work to be done. So it's just the light which put it on, but there's a lot of work to be done. The fire and life safety issues were discussed at the trustee work group and at least one district health and safety meeting. Royal Roberts has confirmed a contract has been approved. And we did indeed have people on campus, however, they were only servicing our fire extinguishers. The Simplex contract from March finally was funded and our, our campus director was told that prior to the Fire Department inspection, they were actually scheduled to start their inspection of all campuses on February 1st. So at this time, the campus is still on full fire watch and we are hoping to get the panels fixed and certified so we can get off watch.
Thank you for that, chancellor.
I wanted to add to the report that the president just gave that earlier today, we did get, we did get a report from a Simplex Grinnell that the cost to be able to fix the, the fire panels that have issues was about forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. So because the district already had a contract for repairs for fifty-five thousand, I did approve this and send it back to Gary Hall over a Simplex Grinnell so that by tomorrow, they come with their crew to begin to fix the panels and get certification to be sent to the Fire Department so that we stop fire watch. So we are now completed the process of testing and we know what is wrong. So the next phase is to be able to repair the findings that they have. So this is the document for that.
Thank you for that, chancellor.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. So we have a question from trustee Weinstein.
So I don't think we have the time to go into it this evening. And I'm glad that we are moving along and that, that we're helping to fix things. But I really want us to talk about it a little bit further at another meeting to figure out how this can never happen again because we have put risk to faculty, students, staff. And as a trustee, it's upsetting to hear about it. And so I would like to ask that we have another discussion and find a way to make it not happen again. Thanks.
Thank you. We will move on to 3.0, which is our consent calendar. Can I get an approval, a motion to approve?
Second.
We need a motion to approve. And we have a second. Can we do roll call, please?
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you win? Trustee Napoli, Bella Reese? Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Our last item is 4.1 and 4.1 is in action. And this is, consider approval for addendum number two in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in ICC contract number 1775 for SMH Communications. And is there anyone who wants to start that conversation? I have some issues with it.
But, go ahead.
Trustee Weinstein.
Okay, in terms of reading the, the request for the amount of thirty thousand dollars, I'm confused as to what exactly we're doing because the, I thought that the original amount goes until June or July and there's an ask for additional money now. So that's one issue. The second issue is that, that I know this is a consultant and we've worked with this consultant for a while, but I also have a question as to why wouldn't this position be a staff position?
Direct that to chancellor.
I'll ask President Burns to please respond.
First off, this person serves somewhat as a PIO. There is, we do not have funding for a full-time PIO. This person's been with Merritt since before I got there. And this is the way we've sent it to you in the past. We paid part of it, then we sent the other one as a part of an addendum. So I was kind of confused too that we were, that it was being questioned when we've sent it. I've been here two and a half years, the last two years, and no one questioned it. So we sent it back the way we, we've done in the past.
And so I can appreciate that, thank you. I know that we have classified staff PIO at, I believe, BCC and Laney, but we do not have, and these are the two contracts that constantly come from COA and from Merritt. And so this is a deeper discussion around why you don't have what you definitely need in terms of full-time support as a PIO who's doing similar work, contract work that SEIU or Classified Staff can perform. And because it's long-term, over long periods of time, that's one issue. I think the other issue that trustee Weinstein brought up is that there is no contract extension date. There's just an increase in, in dollars, which then begs the question, are new services being asked because there isn't a contract extension date? So in essence, did we burn through the first forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars? And the end date is still 6/30/2019, which was on the original contract. But we're now adding an additional thirty dollars. So is there a new scope of work? And if this is new scope of work, then it should have come as a new contract and not an addendum. But I will direct that to, to the chancellor.
Certainly, we, in reviewing the board agenda, I had the same concern. I think what, as President Burns suggested, this is something that has been a habit that has happened at Merritt College, but it's time for us to stop it. We, we need to, especially if we've done it so many years before, it's, we should know what the level of needs are and, and make sure that we, we budget for that and that we have a contract that addresses that. And indeed, it doesn't, number, two things. Number one, it doesn't look good if we say that the contract expires in June and then we add thirty thousand dollars to it. That, and without having new scope of work for that, it just doesn't look good. And then, secondly, if we, if we know that, we need to determine what we need on a long-term basis and we need to determine that. We certainly hear you very well in terms of the, the need for the PIO. We are working through the delineation of functions where we will talk about what to centralize, what to decentralize. And this would be one of the positions, we've already had some conversations about how exactly do we provide enough support in public information services to, to the colleges? And when, and you correct as well, when, at one college you have the services being full-time, another one you don't, that's the type of stuff that we do need to balance so that we can be as consistent as we need to be.
Thank you. Trustee Rice.
We have a fascinating relationship with independent contractor consultants or independent consultant contracts here. And as I was looking at this, I guess the first question that came to mind, in addition to what you had already said in terms of the scope of work not actually being more than what it was initially, was if we knew that this was going to be seventy-five thousand dollars, why didn't it come to us in the beginning as seventy-five thousand dollars? Particularly if the scope of work hadn't been done. Secondly, also, in one of the other documents on here, it said it was sixty-five dollars an hour. So if seventy-five thousand per year is where we're at, that's about 20 hours a week. And I was comparing it to, I believe, the salaries for PIOs at our other colleges. And that's about the same, if not more, than our PIOs at other colleges. And I just did a quick search, so that could be incorrect. But that also just begs the question as to, are we paying what we should be for the amount of work? And if we are paying the same for an ICC that we would for a full-time, that also is problematic and concerning. But going back to the seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, yes, some, sometimes with, with these contracts and then employment, you don't count the benefits as part of that. So the, it's hard to compare them from, from that standpoint. But I think that your point is really well taken. We do need to evaluate the position because it has existed for, the contract, because it has existed for several years. And we do need, we have the problem at two of our colleges and we do need to address that, both at Merritt and at COA.
Thank you. Any other comments? We can take a roll call vote. President Burns, would you like to say something?
Student trustee Galan? Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
No.
Trustee Napoli, Bella Reese?
No.
Trustee Brown?
I have a clarifying question. The contract subject matter, the scope, is for class schedules. What happens to Merritt College, if you wouldn't mind, or through the chancellor, what happens to our enrollment and our students if we don't pass the contract? I just need to know what my vote means.
I will address that, ask President Burns to respond to that.
Well, at this time, now that the class schedule and catalog are gone back to the colleges, so I'm. colleges, so I'm surprised because when, what I looked at and signed off did show an addition in the scope, and this person is now assisting, not doing all of it, but assisting with those pieces. And that wasn't always the case, as well as helping to post some things to our website to help us, to keep us going, because it's all about PR. And so our website is one of our major sources to be able to inform the community about what Merritt's all about. And so this person also helps to post those things, take down old information, put it up. And as the chancellor said, this does not include benefits. If we were to hire a person, it would be more than this because then we'd also have to pay the benefit. I don't know. Did that help you, trustee Anna?
I was asking the impact to the college and the students?
We'd have to find someone to help us do the schedule. So, yeah, it would be an impact if we can't do our schedule, but, I mean, we'd figure it out. But, yeah, it is an impact to the schedule and to the catalog.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
No.
Trustee Bonilla?
No.
Thank you. Motion fails.
Trustee Handy, yes.
So Merritt is doing great because of what they're doing here and the job that this person is doing. Where other colleges are bleeding in enrollment, Merritt is now picking up. And so now we have just voted to castrate Merritt so that we will not be, they will not be able to continue on their trajectory, which is what I would actually think is what we were here to do, is to ensure that we get students there. The other part is institutional memory. This board voted to wipe out, not you individuals, but to, they wanted to get rid of PIOs at all of the colleges and centralize one PIO. So Merritt doesn't have one because the only one that was left, I think, was Shirley Figurino. And so that was intentional. So you cannot come back now and penalize them for the decisions that this board made in terms of not having those people on those, on those campuses. The ones who had them were able to keep them, but the others were not. So this doesn't make sense. When you're gonna tie their hands and keep them from being able to do what they're supposed to do and then come back and penalize them later?
Trustee Handy, the contract can come back in a different form. The way that it is currently constructed is, is not in accordance with, with DGS.
So doesn't that go with the board responsibility of the 72 hours is to get your board materials so that you can read them and bring any questions that you have to the president of the board, who will bring them to the chancellor to get those answered for you? Isn't that the procedure? That's what the whole purpose of the 72 hours is for.
That's a practice, and yes, you're absolutely right. So. We are now, we will move from this item, and we will go into.
President Bonilla?
Yes.
Can I get the motion and the second confirmed for this? I don't believe we had a motion or a second for this item, so if I can just get that repeated?
Motion to approve 4.1. Yes. Do we have a motion to approve 4.1? Did we have a motion? It was so moved by trustee Reese. Do we have a second? We had a second by trustee Weinstein.
Thank you.
Informational items. They don't appear to be any. Board reports. Trustee Withrow? Board of trustee reports. Trustee Gonzalez, Galan?
I look forward to connecting Ron Nelson and Roberto with Mr. Lamb. Thanks.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Jordan?
I just want to say that trustee Weinstein and I and another student from Lainey College, we got together and we executed what we set out to do at the last board meeting, which was to write in protest about the changes that were being made to Title IX. And so we got together collectively and did the research, and then we sent in the information. So I just wanted to report that back, and thank you for working with me. I really appreciate it.
Trustee Brown?
I want to congratulate the Lainey football team, Lainey College president, and that success is all of our success. And Coach Beam, who carries more students on the team than actually play because that is a student outreach methodology and a contribution to our community. Also, Tony Cook, who's not here, who had begun a formerly incarcerated student program at College of Alameda a few years ago. Now we have the Restoring Our Communities program and the resolution that Peralta passed a couple of weeks ago regarding repeal of the federal ban on using the Pell Grant for incarcerated students will be taken up in Washington, DC next week when we go as one of the legislative goals of the Diversity Committee. So I want to say that the work that we do here in Peralta does affect the nation.
Thank you for that. Trustee Napoli Abella Reese?
So much has happened in the past couple of weeks, ACC, JCC, CCLC, but one of these days when we actually end at a reasonable time, I will have a trustee report, but today I will pass.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen? Trustee Weinstein?
Yeah, I just want to say that in terms of Peralta's response to Title IX, thank you, Ayesha Nicolon, and also Kiran Darkwater, we did sign on to the California Community College office, and we were only one of five colleges that did that. So I'm very pleased that we did that, and there was a comment that they sent to the Department of Education and Betsy DeVos talking about why we were not happy with the recommendation. So thank you for letting us move forward, and thank you to the students for helping to work on this.
Thank you, everyone. And do we have any closeout?
The next regular board meeting will be held on February 26th at the District Office Boardroom, and the board wishes the community a Happy Black History Month in February and a Happy Chinese New Year of the Pig. Madam President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.